Counselor Hamilton.
Here.
Counselor Woods.
Here.
Counselor Daigle.
Here.
Counselor Whitaker. Counselor Smalley.
Here.
Counselor Grossman. Mayor Sumner.
Here. Introduction of media, any media present? Anyone wishing to speak before the city council tonight on any subject matter will need to fill out a speaker form and turn it into the recordings. Forms are available on the sign and table in the back of the room. Please turn cell phones off or silence them during the meeting. Announcement for Zoom attendees. If you're joining tonight's meeting via Zoom, you will automatically be muted upon entry. And you'll need to identify yourself if your full name is not already attached to the device being used. You will be unable to unmute yourself. If you wish to speak, use the raise your hand feature. To use it, click on the reactions icon at the bottom of your screen and click on the image of a hand. Any vulgar, abusive, harassing, racist, or other other language or material may cause you to be cut off and or ejected from the meeting. Public comment. The purpose of this public comment period is to allow citizens to present information or raise issues regarding agenda items only. There will be time at the end of the meeting for citizens to speak about off agenda items. A time limit of three minutes per citizen shall apply. All citizens must come up to the microphone. So I have a few here on agenda items. First one is John Van Ducci. You can state your name and your address.
John Van Ducci. 426 Battle of the Fairway State. I'm here on the signal versus the roundabout and sincerely, I want the signal as soon as possible. If we can prevent an accident there or somebody getting killed there and not waiting five, 10, or 15 years for something that may never happen at the cost it is. These signals are a lot cheaper than the roundabout. And they're a lot safer. They're safer for pedestrians when they cross the street. I've been in roundabouts before in the city. When you try to get out there, you don't know where their car is coming from or where they're turning off. And sometimes you just don't get across. You just have to wait for there's no traffic at all. Signals are absolute. They work good in this country and they'll work good here too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Karen Meyer.
Karen Meyer, 1826 Aspen, around the evidence. I'm grateful to see that we're doing something different with the village. I'm grateful to see that there are there is a new rule in black and white. There won't be any outsiders that will be staying long term. It will be confined to just the night. And I'm grateful to see there's new management. I know Dana Fong from several years ago and I've always found him to be someone who can get the job done and who's honest, a caring person. The only other thing I want to talk about is transparency. Transparency that's going on in the past three years, I guess, however long it's been going on. I did a public records request and it was just like pulling teeth to get any information. Last time, the mayor skipped over the workshop, even though that workshop had been asked for by several, by at least one councilor that I know for several months. My wrist can for two months when ignored. Last month, somebody did. I wasn't called. Somebody did say something about it and I was called on. And then denying council requests. There's been a concert that's asked to have a workshop on this for several months and it's just been denied. And I want to tell you that any three counselors can ask for a special meeting because it takes the mayor to do that. So that's about all I have to say. The one thing that has concerned me has been the lack of safety regulations for villagers at the village. And I haven't seen the council pass any. I specifically did my public records request and asked for them. And I didn't see what I got back was a link to something from the state of Oregon dealing with land use. And so we need to have those men die here. And it was because there were no fire alarms or man oxide alarms, you know. Transitway housing. The state of Oregon has them. If you want to use them, they say you don't have to, but you should think about it.
Thank you. Sorry, Yarvero.
I'd like to return my time until the end of the meeting.
If it's on agenda, if you could do it now. If it's off agenda, then you can do it after.
I'll be fine.
Mike Meyer.
Hi, my name is Michael Meyer. 1826 Aspen, Ron, Southern. I have a couple of comments about Hastings Village. It was started as I believe is a safe place for the homeless. And I think that's not quite happening yet. There have been three deaths down there. One by asphyxiation. The other I think was an overdose and the other I don't know. And I can't verify that that was a death. There's been four fires down there. And I went down to the village the other day. Just I wanted to check some of the safety things. The fluke, the tents. Really. He said. I was an HVAC. I was a farmer before I was an HVAC contractor. The fluid pipes are very dangerous. There's a one right on the street. That's a single wall pipe coming outside of the tent. It's touching combustibles, has a piece of wood there that scorched about 18 inches down, pulling it up. I saw two other ones that may or may not be in compliance for safety rules for tents. I saw several other, not several, but a few others that certainly were not in compliance because there's there's boots and that that you can get for tents that to keep the combustible, the flue from the combustible materials. So four fires. I think it's recognizable that that would happen. And I know they're using wood because I deliver firewood down there. And this is a question on that issue. Has a fire marshal inspect any of these? And especially with the asphyxiation death. As far as I know, anytime you have something like that, the fire marshal is involved. And then check it out and see what happened. I have heard nothing to that effect. So that's a question I'd like answered before the meeting's over. Is if the fire marshal has been involved in any of these inspections or and or deaths down there. The other thing, the other thing I wanted to mention was, like I said, I was a farmer the first few decades of my life. And the ground conditions, this is a wetland down there. And there's gravel coming in and out. But it's a mud hole. You know, it rains here in Oregon. And Sutherland Creek runs by there and it's wet and I'm done.
Thank you. Luke Fortier is sent a letter that he wanted to be read during on agenda items that Melanie will read into the recording.
Mayor and Counsel, Melanie Masterfield, City Recorder. I I have a letter here from a local business owner at Subway regarding the roundabout. Hello, my name is Luke Fortier. I own the Subway restaurant located at 104 Cloverleaf Loop in Sutherland, Oregon. Recently, just a few weeks ago, I was informed that a roundabout improvement may be installed instead of a stoplight at the intersection of Central Avenue and Dakota Street. It is my understanding that the stoplight improvement is fully funded and can be installed soon, but the roundabout would need to wait for another 20 years. I have also seen maps of the proposed roundabout radius and can see that it will impact the drive through lane at my business. I have a few opinions on this that I have listed below. Number one, if there are any improvements to be made that will take away my land and the ability to conduct my business, I would ask that I be a part of that conversation from the beginning so that I can voice my opinions and pros and cons from my point of view. Building a roundabout that would impede the ability to have my drive through lane open would cripple my business, which would in turn devalue my business and property. I would hope that this would never happen to anyone unless there were major safety concerns that could not be mitigated any other way. This, of course, is not the case here. I feel a stoplight would be a valid solution. Number two, waiting to build a safe intersection is a big mistake in my opinion. The traffic seems to be increasing more and more and will only keep getting worse with the addition of the new apartments. I am all in favor of both commercial and residential growth in this area, but with growth comes the need for safety precautions. It is my opinion that a light should be added soon to contend with the added traffic that this growth is bringing. Thank you for reading my letter and listening to my thoughts. Sincerely, Luke Fortier.
Okay, any other ones? On to presentations, Sutherland area, Chamber of Commerce. By the way, happy birthday.
Thank you. So I have some printed out packets for you guys at the presentation deck. Thank you guys for having me. Thank you, Counsel and staff and jury. I want to first talk about some data, some really exciting, fun data about our destination to talk about the tourism part of it. So in your packet, there is some slides on a visitor profile report from 21 to 2022. This was done by Travel Oregon and in collaboration with Destination Analytics. And it really kind of goes through and talks about who is visiting our area. So it talks about who is visiting our state first and it kind of goes through just some highlights. We get about 82.8% for our state for repeat visitation. First time visitation is about 17.2%. They're primarily visiting us because of vacation and leisure, but also mainly for to visit family and friends, which is a big deal for us and for rural. So that drives a lot of our visitation. It drives a lot of our visitation for that repeat visitation because they're keeping me back and visiting us to see their friends and family. I know this is really exciting for me, but it's not super exciting for you guys yet that hang in there because it's really going to be exciting. This is super fun information. So it goes into our Southern Oregon visitors too. And it kind of has the same and mirrors the same kind of stuff as our state. So they're coming for an average of about a week, 5.5 months to stay with us. They're spending time in their three kind of major tourism ticks. They need lodging, food, and activity. So they're spending most of their money doing those types of things. But we see most of our visitors here in May in our region, which is kind of surprising because usually we think we see most of our visitors in the summertime. But 18.4% of our visitors are coming during during May, which is a big, big jump for us. And they're seeing us in our region. They're visiting us about 8.6% out of all of the entire state and out of all of the entire region, I'm sorry. So we have a lot of room to kind of raise that up. Oakland is being seen a little bit more often than us at about 10.3%. So we have a lot of room to kind of get those numbers up. It's important that we all know this and I talked about this at our stakeholder meetings because it really does affect all of us. We can talk about tourism, tourism based in businesses, but really it affects our economy and all of our businesses are vital to our economy. And all of them are affected by tourism. And especially here where we are located, there's so many surrounding areas. It's not just Sutherland that's affected. It's all of us, our whole destination being our whole county. So we really focus on these numbers a fair amount. But what we really want to do is create a network where we're kind of pulling people through our our area and our whole destination. Because we don't have some things that like Roseburg has, right? We don't have wineries here, but they're really close. We know that we have visitors that do wine tastings. We don't want to ignore those people. We want to bring them through here, even though we don't have a winery, we can still get them through our destination. If we really start to focus on customizing and working through a strategy to get them through. And we do that through our network of members. The more members we have, the more they work together, the more, the more they refer each other and get them through our destination, the more we see that benefit and those numbers go up. So we do that in a lot of different ways. So we do that through marketing where the DMO, which is the destination marketing organization, which means that we partner with the city and we're contracted with the city. So we get the 70% of the transient lodging tax that comes through our hotels and we turn those around and we try to bring more visitors into our area. So we do that with lots of campaign stuff. So we have created five videos about our destination that Mel will play. And these are really cool. So these are going out within our state. So they're not going outside of the area. Sorry, you want me to play? Hold on. So they're not going outside of our area, but they're going in in really kind of streaming market. So they're really customized to keywords, families, wine drinking, stuff like that. So a lot of the stuff in our destination that we want to tick through that, they're going on streaming and connected TV. So they're hitting really high rates actually through that. And they're right now going through the Ashland Medford area and hitting about an 86.3% click through rate and watch through rate. That means that everybody that's seen them is watching through them and they're, we have a high rate of clicking through to our website. So we're driving some visitation to our website, which in turn shows our members and our destination. So we'll watch these really quick. They're 15 seconds, but they're super fun. Okay. So those, like I said, those play on connected TV. They play on phones. They have a different look than what we've done. We're going after a little bit younger crowd. Those were all locals that we use and we're hitting some on wine. We're hitting some on Oakland. We're really trying to connect on lots of different areas to bring those visitors in, but also to bring our locals in that don't quite meet that 50 miles out of our area to be a tourist technically. But then come for day trips, come for weekend stuff. We want to move them up, those day trippers into weekend warriors and those weekend warriors into those long night stayers, those long vacationers. Doing things like that really kind of give us a wider net. So we're moving that throughout our state. They'll be in Portland for a little bit. They'll be in Salem for a little bit. They'll be in Ashland. So they'll really kind of get our drive market. We really want to hit that I5 corridor. We're just right off there. We really want to hit Tesla because we wanted, you know, we want to bring in some of those travelers. And we really want to bring in a lot of our destinations high point features so that we're really creating a destination of us and getting them to come out of Sutherland. So a lot of work is going into that. We're also kind of switching gears. A lot of that stuff for tourism, since we're a DMO, we do a lot in business to business as well. So we created, we're creating two new programs right now. The first one is a chamber ambassador program, which isn't a new program. That's a national program. Those are in lots of chambers all over the place. But here we're, we want to really make an impact in our community and we want to really bring in a lot more community investment into our businesses. So we'll be using our chamber ambassadors. We'll be training them, having them go inside businesses, going through the tours. And they'll be doing, doing tours for our visitors and our locals alike, working with our visitor center to actually coordinate museum tours, downtown tours, tours of Oakland, Fort Smith Pond, Cooper Creek, all those types of things. They'll also be able to direct traffic and show people where to go, how to go and where to get there. And these are people from Rotary, our service clubs. We're also going to be folding in junior ambassadors from the high school and middle school so that we can create some opportunity for our youth. We'll be working with the schools, UCC, and our local schools here to help with credit and also get them into some positions when they're old enough to get into our, our businesses. And then we're going to be switching around our visitor centers. So right now it's really kind of out of, out of the gate facing. So you go in there and grab all your brochures and then you head on your way outside of our area. I don't really like that. So we're going to kind of make it a lot more us. So we're going to really highlight our wine scene and our outdoor stuff and the stuff that we saw on those, on that data that we need to lift up. So our family stuff and all of that stuff. So we really want to start bringing in some tourist experts and having them work in the visitor center. People from our wine industry, people from Wildlife Safari to come through and work a day in our visitor center. Talk about the animals, what we have in our destination. If that can get one more person to stay an extra day here and go see what we have throughout our county, that really does move the needle for us. It really does make Sutherland a lot more positioned better to be a destination and it makes us a better partner within our region. So we really want to work together and create a pathway for our members to refer each other and move our, not just our visitors, but our locals alike, our community in a more strategic way. So they're opening the doors to all of our businesses and really benefiting from everything we have. So it should become super soon. Get back to work tomorrow. Anyone have any questions? Did I go too fast and get too squirreled? Everyone good?
Nailed it.
I have another question. Is there a you have a understanding of why May is so much higher than the present?
May is actual Oregon Wine Month. And we do a lot of, our destination as a whole actually does a lot of marketing for Wine Month. I assume, and so does our region, that we have a heavier, heavier visitation rate in wine because we have more visitors in May coming for wine. And they're coming here for it too.
Thank you. On to consent agenda, Minister from January 8th, 2024, by the motion. I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda meeting minutes in January. I have a motion and a second to approve consent agenda. Any discussion?
I vote. Counselor Hamilton.
Hi.
Counselor Woods.
Hi.
Counselor Daigle.
Hi.
Counselor Whitaker.
Hi.
Counselor Smalley.
Hi.
Counselor Grossman.
Hi.
Mayor Sumner.
Hi.
Motion carries.
Under Council Business, Budget Calendar Approval, Staff Report, Finance Director.
Yes, Mayor, Counselors, Tammy Trobridge, Finance Director. And this I have put beside you up there, the revised city budget calendar, the one that was in the past, which I think was as wrong as the urban renewal one was. So we've lined the dates up correctly and this represents those dates. With the first, the budget message and the proposed budget delivered to the budget committee on May 13th. I'm highlighting just the major dates here. And then the first budget committee meeting is on May 20th with the subsequent meetings, if needed, on the 21st and the 22nd of May.
Do I have a motion?
Make a motion that we approve the budget calendar for 24, 25.
I have a motion and a second to approve budget calendar 24, 25 as presented. Any discussion?
Counselor Hamilton.
Hi.
Counselor Woods.
Hi.
Counselor Daigle.
Hi.
Counselor Whitaker.
Hi.
Counselor Smalley.
Hi.
Counselor Grossman.
Hi.
Mayor Sumner.
Hi.
Motion carries.
Under Resolution 2024.02, Surplus Property Fire Department Equipment, Deputy Fire Chief.
Very, Counsel, it's not a fire chief. The firing the large brush, the brush ring from the state, it's no longer need this one for that. 35 and it's on you and Adrian on fire.
Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
The motion is second to approve resolution 2024.02, surplus property. Any discussion? Well.
Counselor Hamilton.
Hi.
Counselor Woods.
Hi.
Counselor Daigle.
Hi.
Counselor Whitaker.
Hi.
Counselor Smalley.
Hi.
Counselor Grossman.
Hi.
Mayor Sumner.
Hi.
Motion carries.
Deputy Fire Chief, are you in a position to be able to answer that question at this, at this moment from the public comment and arguing?
Let me think more time. Some of our, not have a fire marshal to that. Our marshal got it.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. On to Resolution 2024.03, surplus property, public work, public work.
Evening, Mayor, Counsel. We are getting rid of just a couple items that we no longer need. At 90, 90, 58 year back to the new age, 325 kilo larger. And so we're asking the surplus though, we sell in an auction, the next I5 auctions. So.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 24, 2024.03, surplus property of the new age, 325 kilo. And then 1990, 206 K. 580 K back home. And present.
We have a motion and a second. As presented, any discussion?
Counselor Hamilton.
Hi.
Counselor Woods.
Hi.
Counselor Daigle.
Hi.
Counselor Whitaker.
Hi.
Counselor Smalley.
Hi.
Counselor Grossman.
Hi.
Mayor Sumner.
Hi.
Motion carries.
Under Resolution 2024.04, appropriations transfer, Finance Director.
Evening, Mayor, Counselors, Tammy Trobridge, Finance Director. We're presenting appropriations transfer. Very free to consider, there were a few unforeseen events that have happened and appropriations transfer is allowed a certain percentage. You're just transferring out of contingency and it's simpler than a supplemental budget. And this fit within those criteria. So we had an employee legal issue that has been going on for a few years, just kind of hanging. So we had an employee legal issue that has been going on for a few years, um, just kind of hanging out there. Uh, employee had. Filed some, uh, ex-employee, okay, had uh. Pushed back on some sort of claim and sometimes insurance likes to just. Pay those things, just say, go ahead and pay them off because we're going to have a lot of time wrapped up in it. But we had a department head who was very convinced of. Their, they were in the right position. And so they didn't want to do that, did not do that. And so we're finally coming to closure. And he was right. All the way along. And as part of our CIS insurance, there's an employment claim participation deductible of ten percent of what CIS pays. Out on this. And that amount is forty-eight hundred dollars is what's coming to us. They paid forty-eight thousand. Which is still less than the settlement would have been if they had done what they. Were being pressured to do. And so, um. I, our department head stood up for what was right. I think it cost them a lot of time and effort and it uh, was well worth it, I believe. So that's part of that adjustment on the insurance. There was also another premium associated with other insurance changes additional of five thousand dollars. So there's a. A appropriations transfer of ninety-eight hundred total for the insurance. Also, we had two longtime employees leave the fire department early in this fiscal year. And that also includes um, paying out for vacation. Which is not part of the budget. You never really plan for that unless somebody gives you advance warning. And so. Just given the fact that there are other issues coming into line that could stress that budget. Also, if you have conflagration or any additional overtime coming in, trying to cover shifts. We're going to be uh. Tight on that personnel services. So um, this also would cover those. Vacation payouts is what this twenty thousand will do. And then also due to the unforeseen status change of the city manager, which you guys uh, discussed in New York in December. Um, he also had, there was other. There was a vacation payout there, fee payout, and then um, an additional, there was a pay rate. That we need to make appropriation for. So. All those things were unforeseen and the total of it is fifty-seven thousand, six hundred dollars and. That's backstory behind that. Any questions?
We have a motion first. Make a motion to approve resolution twenty-two, four point oh four, appropriations for the. Commending twenty-two, three dash twenty-four. Um, considering approving resolution for maybe.
The motion is second for twenty-two, four point oh four, any?
Counselor Hamilton?
Hi.
Counselor Woods?
Hi.
Counselor Daigle?
Hi.
Counselor Whitaker?
Hi.
Counselor Smalley?
Hi.
Counselor Grossman?
Hi.
Mayor Sumner?
Hi.
Motion carries.
On the purchase approval, solar beads mixer. Public work, correct?
Fair, council, there's more important works again, um. So I, I brought a report to you guys in the fall, I think November, about our solar beam mixers that we've been. Running on a trial basis, experiment, see if they would work good to kind of pre-treat that water. Staff and engineers both agree that they are improving raw quality enough. That uh, actually substantial amount. It's worth it um, to go ahead and uh, and buy those outright. Rental slash purchase agreement. So the payout, the buyout would be a hundred thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars this time. We recommend that staff. What the uh, I do have some data. I, I didn't include that in the package. It's kind of maybe hard to navigate. Um. Our, our manganese, our, our raw manganese has been decreased by almost uh. About a third of what it, a little over a third of what it normally was fall, when it became hardened treat. And so we feel like uh. We're really doing. They also help with some of the um, organics that cause um. Some other treatment. I do have that. See it. I could get it to you. I think so.
So we have a motion first.
Make a motion that we approve the purchase of solar beam mixer. Uh, in the amount of a hundred thousand, two hundred.
One second. We're motioning a second. Now discussion.
Okay, good. With the, this one is to discontinue for system. Are we responsible at that point to do any maintenance? Care on that or does that come with the short of warrant? Uh, long-term warranty, you might advance with that back and.
If there is a warranty, I, I can't speak exactly.
Is there a monthly maintenance on top of the purchase of the?
Uh, after a while, we'll have to take that over, but.
Does this save us money overall, over time? And so could you explain how long?
There are so many variables that we're going to put out. Compensation, but we will save a lot on chemicals and eventually. That, that will happen. But it depends on how late we have to treat in the year because that's when it really skyrockets in September. Uh, late August and September. And if. The weather gets cooler, we don't need to call on Cooper as much, then uh. Then, you know, there's a lot of very, very.
But that's one thing it's doing is saving us a lot.
On chemical.
And this is for both of them.
Two solar bees. Yeah.
And I read the packet and the contract, proposed contract. And it talks about working here, like you just stated, it doesn't give any duration or any date. Uh, I think before it's executed, that needs to be spelled out.
Right. I'm sure it has. I just don't have that top of mind.
Find any dates on them. Or anyway, I just did a note that I have, you know, we can approve it. If they decide to, but we need to have that date or a duration. Did we use less chemicals this year with the solar beet treatment?
I don't know. I'll use that offset the price of the. Right. Yes, we did use less uh, K nine oh four, which is. Acium per magnet considerable, not less. Once again, in the, in the fall, we don't treat as much water out of there. So I, I'm not sure the exact.
It's at least a million dollars.
It's in the thousands, I would say. Uh. Low, you know, a couple of grand to save. This year, spend a hundred grand, tops, a couple grand a year. If, if we are forced to um, treat water into the fall, if. Non-purcell breaks down or we have more, you know, issues out there or something, we're, we're forced to. Use Cooper Creek into the fall, the numbers would be a lot higher. And uh, so it is, it's kind of um. I'm making, it's a trade-off, it's insurance, it's uh. Just makes better quality water safer, you know, the whole nightmare.
Did they get hit by a boat this year at all, you know?
Not that I know of. Not that I know of. There's a lot of worries. We rigged up some flags that stick up a little higher so that uh. Yes, yeah, that, that is. And what happens is we can ramp up those chemicals. To take care of that manganese, but it, that manganese fluctuates a lot before we have these. The levels. And so we've got all kinds of chemicals going in. And then the, and then the level of manganese drops a little bit. And then uh, you risk sending water to town that's over treated. And it's just really hard for these guys to uh. Walk away from that plant, leave it running. With this, it's. Way more uh, manageable. They can set it and go home for the night and have confidence that it's not going to be that.
Or Aaron, do we know the life cycle of these bees? And uh, they're controlled by SCADA, right?
Yes, they're um, they're not, we're installing the SCADA, okay, this year. Uh, so they've just been up there. But um, I don't know what the life expectancy of these are. They all have, they have all replaceable parts and. Pumps and they're well-built. So I would imagine that with some maintenance and a little bit of replacement, we could um. Further proceed.
Any other comments, questions?
Counselor Hamilton? Counselor Woods?
So a lot of money.
Counselor Daigle? Counselor Whitaker?
Hi.
Counselor Smalley?
Hi.
Counselor Grossman?
Hi.
Mayor Sumner?
Hi.
Motion carries.
On the Parks Advisory Committee approval, staff report, their report.
Good evening, mayor and council, city reporter Melanie Masterfield. Uh, the city has, currently has one vacancy available on the Parks Advisory Committee for determining December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. And we've received one application from Terry Brock, who I believe is here tonight.
Terry, would you like to come up and introduce yourself and share a little bit about? Why you'd like to be in the Parks Advisory?
Oh, boy. Uh, my name is Terry Brock. I live over on four oh three Fairway Estates. Um, the reason why I'd like to be involved in the Parks Committee is because we've got some pretty incredible parks. We've got some, some great work going on. We've got a lot of, a lot of good things that really benefit our community. Um, City Park is amazing. The pond is amazing, but I also see a lot of opportunity for other improvements too. And I'd like to be a part of that. That's kind of where I'm coming from.
Thank you. So do I have a motion?
I'm making a motion to uh. Allow Terry Brock.
My motion is second to appoint Terry Brock to Parks Advisory Committee, term ending in December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five as presented. Any discussion?
Counselor Hamilton?
Hi.
Counselor Woods?
Hi.
Counselor Daigle?
Hi.
Counselor Whitaker?
Hi.
Counselor Smalley?
Yeah.
Counselor Grossman?
Hi.
Mayor Sumner?
Hi.
Motion carries.
Under report, Wade Street improvement update.
Mayor, council, um, Cynthia Gilbert, community development. So back in August of twenty twenty-three, so long ago, um, the council awarded a contract to Civil Solutions Engineering. Um, for the engineering design and construction cost estimate of the Wade Street improvement in order to apply certain. Letter of interest open today. So we're ready to start packing away with that, but I would like to invite being more of an up. Um, with Civil Solutions and I'm letting you tell you a little bit about what he's been going through.
I must say that if you don't like the thousand for the solar bees, you're not going to like what happens. Pretty quick. I'll get started. So again, James Norton, Civil Solutions Engineering. Um, I prepared a PowerPoint presentation to uh, kind of walk you through the scope of work. And the original scope of work and a revised scope of work for issues that I'll talk about. Um, I'll walk you through the layout of the street, uh, what's going to be a ten-foot wide path. Um, in the long. Pedestrian bridge over Sutherland Creek. And then I will also talk about the cost and process of the whole project. And so the original scope was basically for me to provide a complete construction plan set with following elements. Uh, for that, again, that's Wade Street, you know, from Central Avenue to South Side Road. Um, but the original scope was new curb and gutter, uh, both sides, uh, repair of road failure areas, which there are numerous that we all know. Um. We need to replace asphalt pavement and or kind of a combination of overlays, of spot repair. Overlay everything toward the end. Um, and then at that time, it was to install one six-foot sidewalk. Um, not on both sides, just on the one side, uh, for want to save money. But uh, for another reason, on the east side of Wade Street, as we know, there's deep crooked ditch that are current. There. So we're trying to avoid the Bailey for wetland issue. Um, and then also, uh, you know, providing crosswalks at the side streets. Um, and then a rapid flashing beacon at the intersection of Wade Street. Uh, so that would be people crossing Wade at Seastreet there, the rapid flashing beacon for the. Um, and then at that time, we also thought that we'd get away with modifying the existing vehicular bridge. Um, to basically have a wooden structure attached to the side of the bridge, uh, for pedestrian foot trap. Um, what we quickly found out, and you'll see the revised scope, is that. The existing vehicular bridge, uh, from guardrail to guardrail, it's only thirty feet wide. Uh, so you know, we're giving it two twelve-foot travel length and then two six-foot bike lane, but total thirty-six feet, so we're sixteen foot. So. That is not going to work. So we had to kind of go with the plan, but not going to talk about that in a second. Um, and then we would, I would, excuse me, provide an engineer's cost estimate. Um, and that cost estimate would obviously include the construction costs. But also the engineering, twenty percent contingency and the legal administration thing associated with the project and funding. And then finally, just to um, help Christie in any way possible, secure that, the safe route. So the original, uh, and the basis of original scope was uh, based on this illustration that comes out of the city Sutherland design standards. And Wade Street is classified as a major collective street. Um, so you get, the original idea was to give you everything you see there except for one last, you know, six-foot sidewalk on the, on the east side. Um, again, once we realized that the, the bridge is too narrow, then this kind of went out the window. We had to kind of scramble. So everything that, you know, I'm going to provide again, right? So the, the ones that are highlighted there, that's kind of the domain changes uh, to the scope. So. Uh, the Wade Street is basically being pushed to the east. Um, so doing so is going to, there's going to be some, uh, I guess kind of slivers or strips of basically brand new street, right? It's going to be pushed over. Uh, so there'll be all new, so remove all the existing asphalt, replace it with new asphalt. Again, shift the alignment to the east a little bit. And then. By doing that, um, there's going to be some retaining walls in the south side road, you can go with that during a little bit. Um, but in doing all that, then we have to go away from those roadside ditches that we're trying to build for. It's just inevitable. Um, so that's, uh, the wetlands examiner, uh, knows about this. He's, um, already kind of studied it. We've been in communication, and what he is going to take what we, uh, mitigation to, to make this happen, fortunately. Uh, so going in those ditches, new thirty-six inch, uh, stronger pipe. The existing pipe up by the bank, you know, it drains everything from the high school dams as well. Um, and then also. You can't, uh. If, if even if we wanted to add a five or six-foot wide pedestrian, you know, wood structure aside of existing big bridge. Again, we still have nowhere to take the bicyclists. So let's introduce the bikes with pedestrian. Um, now you need a minimum of ten-foot wide path. So that basically said, well, we need a brand new bridge. Um, across the creek. And that, that bridge will be a, almost an exact. And that, that bridge will be a, almost an exact copy of what street pedestrian bridges have right here. You know, including, right, your custom street. Next slide. So revised basis. Uh, so the, on the top there, that's the Wade Street, uh, you know, the typical section. Um, so kind of starting at the left hand side of the screen, working your way to the right. So you got the right of way, and there's gonna be that new thirty six inch pipe. Uh, where people are working your way over, we got a new curb and gutter, then we have the two twelve foot uh travel lanes. Another uh curb and gutter. And then we have this, what's called a, it's labeled as five feet, but it's a five foot separation. Um, so that separates. The uh. Street traffic from the pedestrian traffic, and that's a requirement. Um, ODOT and another uh. Uh, manual, sign manual that I've been referred to. Um, and I'll talk about that here in a second, expand on that. Um, but from that five foot separation, then you have the uh ten foot wide asphalt multi-use path. And of course, they need to get.
What, um, what is on top of the. Form during?
It's. I, it's gonna be gravel, uh, so basically new curb and gutter, and then it'll be a gravel shoulder, probably at least five feet out, and that will transition to existing ground, probably re-grading, but.
So then you go right into people's property right there.
Correct, yeah, yeah, so we, yeah, grade that to get it to, to drain, maybe we want it to pull the torn part and have it, if you want it to be adjacent property. Um, we have to grade that out, it's gonna be gravel.
And what, what's gonna happen to everybody's driveway that goes right across all of them? Or the storm drains?
Right, yeah, uh, those will be replaced, uh, so we're gonna demo out everything that's there, nothing that's existing, you can say. It's all at different elevations, and of course, you have to see thirty six inch pipe going through there. Um, so what it will be is a. Twelve foot wide uh concrete driveway approach, it's, you know, it's a standard drawing for this in Sutherland. Um. And then there'll probably be a, you know, kind of a cost cutting feature here, but at the back of the. Five foot uh concrete driveway, there'd be another five foot strip of asphalt. They just got for, um, to keep rocks from being pushed up on top of the concrete, you know, there's the wheels pounding, so. We have that, and then it would be graded accordingly.
And as of this meeting?
Correct. All within the right way, okay. Yeah. And in the bottom section, that's just a blow up of the upper right hand corner there, right, so we got the new curb and gutter. And now that five foot separation, I have it broken down into three foot and two foot segments. Um, so the idea there is the, the, the two foot segment, and actually on the, on the park side of the path here, so there's two two foot segments. That is another requirement for ODOT regulations and actual bike design facility manual. Uh. That there's a two foot shoulder, gravel shoulder on that edge of the path. So within that five foot segment there, uh, we got two foot shoulder, that leaves us three feet. The idea there, uh, you kind of collaboration with city staff was to. Uh, basically make that like the Davian rock, that's four to six, eight inch rock feature that, you know, provides a little bit of a hardscape. You know, I guess aesthetically pleasing rather than just like, you know, a ranch mine scrap pad there, it less maintenance, uh, for sure. Here's picked up, let me go about that. Um, and then below that Davian rock, what you see there is kind of hard to make out. Um, but that's gonna be what basically is a French drain, it's, it's drain rock with an eight inch perforated pipe that will run the full length of the curve. Um, basically the full length of the improvement project. And that is to collect any rainwater that falls on the path, that's directed to that pipe separation. It's collected there, routed into the storm drain system. Uh. And, and then also the homes on the west side of Wade Street that currently have roof drain that drains to it, that's a roadside ditch, we have to pick those up as well, and those tie into that. Next slide. Yeah, so I'm gonna kind of walk you through, you know, I apologize for the audience, it's. Three projects don't really lend themselves to good PowerPoint presentations, but. Um, what you kind of make out there is the red lines, that's the new curb and gutter of Wade Street. So again, we have two twelve foot travel lanes in between the, the two faces of the curve. Uh, the green lines, that's your new storm drain system. Um, so on the, the upper portion or the east portion of Wade Street, that green line running the length of the. Uh, screen there, that's the new, that's that new thirty six inch pipe that I mentioned previously. And then the uh gray line, that is the new ten foot wide. Uh, multi-use path. Um, as you can see, it, it does a little jog out at the intersections, again, that's per ODOT uh regulation, actual regulations. Uh, just for basically providing site distance to for anybody on Wade Street taking a right on, say, East Everett Avenue right there. That pushing the path further away from the street gives that driver a little bit more time to see the way that's entering. So that's why you see kind of offset, and it, you know, provides a little. Other than a straight shot. Any, any questions? Uh, if you see the crosswalks there, is what I guess I didn't mention that, uh, the, the dash lines, there's a, a proposed crosswalk. Next slide. Okay, so now we're working away from Glen Avenue down to Sutherland Creek. Um, again, you curb gutter, uh, you can see the storm drain there, the path. Uh, the most notable, right, is, is where the path meets the new bridge. Uh, the, the new bridge, you can see that, uh, let's say twenty five degree into twenty, it's gonna be a big given bridge. We're probably. In there. Uh, again, that's an exact copy of what's been written on the path. Currently. Um. In a second. Um. And then, oh, and then, I'm sorry, let me show that, there's your driveways right there, you can see those little kind of in paint looking things, I guess you could say those are the driveways to serve for their own. Um, next. And here's just kind of a blow up of that area, the new bridge next to the existing vehicular bridge. Um, and you can see on the south side of the new bridge, the new uh asphalt. Ten foot wide path will tie into the existing trail system there, and then. Close to Red Rock. And then uh. That storm drain's a thing when you see there, so that's gonna drain everything. Out of the bridge, so the outside thing down to the bridge. Um. That mantle, to that large green circle, that is a new mantle laid on that existing open deck uh dischord. It's great. Next.
Well, my first question.
Oh, sure.
Unless I'm reading it wrong, is that thin red line and the heavy red line, is that the bike path?
No, so that's curb and gutter, so it's not a.
Okay, so the pedestrian and the bike path is rather away from it over the bridge.
Correct. Okay. You're correct, yeah. There's a typical section of the pedestrian bridge, I mean, again, everybody, you know, just like all the others here in town. But it is a twelve foot wide opening, so from handrail to handrails, twelve foot clearance. Uh, forty two inch uh high handrail, which is a structural cone. Um, it'd be a timber deck, I think, very similar to the others, they're all timber, right? With that feature there. Um. Yeah, I'm excited. That's, that's the section.
Then on slip edge. Over here, Ross.
Yeah, I know, we, we had to. Kind of, kind of. Excellent. Okay, so now we're, we're taking you, so the south end of the new bridge, it's got ties into the existing trails. And that, those existing trail continues to the south. Uh, to the intersection, basically a red rock trail, or C Street, which I'll refer to it. Uh, that's where the ten foot wide multi uh path picks up once again. And it routes people um from there, basically all the way down to South Side Road. Uh, that's where the multi use path can all stay on one side of. Minimize a pedestrian crossing, a crossway. For green again, everything from the south side. Uh, flows down, you know, to C Street. Uh, where it'd be routed through the existing half fall on the, basically. East side, but on the west side, you can see a little by a, a red rock trail there, there's a little bit of infrastructure there to pick up. Some adjacent coffee runoff. Half fall. Um, they don't have any more reference to side streets, so as the right of screen, you see that have what's called a match line there, so those two curbing lines. I'll show you those on the next slide, if we could jump there real quick. I was kind of over picking up on the left and right, the two curbing lines that I just spoke about. So we're beginning, um, so we're starting to, you know, kind of pick up grade on uphill to South Side Road. Um, the existing road, obviously, it's, it's in poor condition, um, but it's actually narrow. Um, so once I widened it out to a standard street. I was quickly realized that there's gonna be a fair amount of fill brought in, and so there's gonna need to be some retaining wall structure to retain that fill, to get that standard street section to start with. Um. If you were to stand. And kind of want me to point out that on the, on the east side, um, at one point, when you're standing on existing street. The adjacent lot ground level, it's like a ten foot drop. But you know, kind of a quarter magnitude of fall there. Um. I believe I have a section on the next slide. There it is, just kind of showing that a little bit, so. The east side has the most amount of, of elevation drop, so that obviously has the, the higher wall. Uh. The structural engineer that I'm working with, uh, right now, we currently have is, I think everybody's seen the, the eco block, there's, you know, five, six foot long concrete blocks. You know, thirty inches wide, uh, wide, thirty inches tall. That's basically what these walls are gonna be, um, and I think that at the height, I mean, they're on the east side. Forty six to seven feet tall, and maybe the wall on the west side will be about three, four, maybe five feet tall. Um, and then again, as we go back to the typical street section, right, the two, two twelve foot travel lanes, five foot separation, which one they're gonna need to, 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 the ten foot wide asphalt. But please. Okay, so now the good part, the fun part. Engineers estimate. Uh, so the original scope, so this was. Uh, I think this estimate was prepared, uh, February of twenty two, but we don't know. The population went, you know, crazy there. Uh, but then also we've added a lot of expensive elements to this project, except the bridge, it just does not like. Um, so the old estimate, total project cost is to hear over two million. Uh, the three five inch scope, so yeah, big storm drain running the length of Wade Street, uh, an expensive bridge, right? Um, all those have really pumped this up to a total of three point four eight million. Uh, so to break that down, total construction cost, two point five five million, uh, twenty percent contingency is, is just a little over half million. Uh, engineering and three hundred and six thousand permitting, a hundred thousand, there's people having.
So what's the school grant that, would that cover this?
Hmm.
Well, it gets a little tricky, um, they did increase the amount that you're eligible to apply for, however, it's the pedestrian, um, bike pedestrian portions that are eligible. Um, so the structural portions of this group are qualified, that would be our map. So we will break those down and see actually what we're eligible to apply for, um. We recently had learned that they could increase, um, from the two million to the three million, but again. So we would propose breaking it up phases, um, proposed budget years, so, um, depending on how it all pencils out is.
You know, there are other grants that are available that will cover the costs, the, the match costs?
I hadn't really looked at the match cost, just because of. We originally had looked with the urban renewal, uh, dollars being missed, goes to the, um, proposed ball field development, but then there's also. Assistant development, it's in our transportation system plan, so with eligible costs that we had originally when we started this. Um, this will be our third time applying, um, so. Those were what we originally had, so we put it forward.
What's the timeframe? Doing? I mean, how long would it take?
Right, um, so what Chris and I talked about, um, I think you pointed out about the, if you got the grant or not, and the amount of by October of this year.
I wanna say that's kind of approximate, I don't know that we have an actual timeline. Uh, being, the grants being awarded, yeah, um, so depending on when that timeframe is, as we'll work. Um, I'm gonna say June is about the application we do. And so once we have a lot of those days.
I'm, I'm not feeling like, once you start, how long would it take?
Yeah, um. The idea is, so if, if funding comes through, say, late fall, right, then the, um, you still need to write the specifications, the contract documents. Uh, so the idea there is to get this out to bid probably January or February of twenty five. Award, uh, the project by, you know, April of twenty five, and you get the work short, you know, thereafter. Um. I would guess that this is probably a six or seven month project.
So. We've been talking about this for a long time, why is it taking so? Been awarded. Trying.
What's the amount of the?
Well, the three million is what can, we're eligible to apply for, but we have to break down the cost to see what qualifies because it's in. The state rest to school, so it's getting your kids to school safely on the bike, but.
It is that area that.
Yes. Because people even go from the pass and then come down Wade and go up to the school. Cause the red lock. You from both then. And then you have a lot of them coming from South Side, there's the neighborhood that's. Up the freeway, there, or four heights, yeah.
Have we looked at phasing it in? Uh, specifically in the original work first and then. Under portions as they are available.
Right, uh, so I did look at phasing, um, not in the manner that you just laid it out, so, like, you know, there's a million ways of doing it, right? But, but I guess the, what made the most sense to me, uh, would be the first phase would be from Central Avenue. Uh, through the new pedestrian bridge where it ties into existing trails, that would be one phase, and then phase two would be from there, South Side Road. Um, and I kind of broke that down, I mean, it's rough, but uh, phase one, then with, with, the total would be about two point four million, and of course, phase two of the.
I have a question. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
On to a workshop. Uh, first one, Kittleson update. I'm gonna introduce Kittleson's and Associates.
Thank you. To save the show.
Thanks for using this opportunity to talk with you. Can you hear me now?
There you go.
Mm, got it. Thanks for giving me this opportunity to talk with you about, uh, the central, the central and Dakota intersection control evaluation. This is actually part of a much, of, of a larger project we did for the city of Sutherland. And Sutherland Land LLC to evaluate different circulation and access options for the west part of that high five interchange area. Uh, can you go to the next slide, please? So let me just give you. A quick overview, first, I should probably introduce myself, I'm Wayne Kittleson. I'm a traffic engineer from Kittleson and Associates, we're in Portland, Oregon. And who me is Wade Scarborough, he's also a registered professional engineer. Uh, and he and I worked together on this project. So to take you through this, um, this agenda a little bit, what I wanted to do is give you just a little bit of background. By talking, introducing you, in case you don't already know it, to the, to the current ODOT interchange area management plan, so that you see it, understand it. Talk a little bit about the concerns that the. Business owners and property owners in the area came to us with long city of Sutherland. To, uh, see what we could address, if there were things that we could change or modify to en- enhance the circulation we just said today. To, uh, see what we could address, if there were things that we could change or modify to en- enhance the circulation we just said today. I'll take you through the overall kind of go on design concepts evaluation that we undertook. Um, then do a quick introduction to roundabouts, because that was inherent to one of the solutions, actually the preferred solution. For the business owners and property owners. Then we'll talk about the central Dakota intersection analysis, the analysis there looking at the signal versus the roundabout. And questions and discussion. Next slide. So this shows you the current plan for that ODOT has adopted approved for. What they call an interchange area management plan, when I am. Its purpose was to improve safety and operations within that interchange area, as you can imagine. The cost of building interchanges is even higher than what we were just talking about here by orders of magnitude. So ODOT has a real, a real responsibility and, and role to try to protect the investment, they make those interchange improvements. They also wanted to protect that interchange investment and provide better accessibility through this and. Highway one thirty-eight, which is providing access not just to Sutherland, but Westway Town. Next slide, please. So when we came into the, into this process, uh, at, at the request of the business and property owners, um. And city, uh, there were several concerns that were identified for us that we wanted to address to the extent. First, closing Park Hill Lane. Connection to Central Avenue, you can see this on this IA MP, by the way, this is an adopted plan. So unless an amendment is made to this adopted plan. The, the intent and, and what will happen is that, uh, Park Hill Lane. Its current connection to Central Avenue, uh, will be closed. Uh, that was a concern. Uh, out of sort of resulting from that was out of direction travel for to and from existing businesses within the west. Portion of freeway, of that freeway interchange area, and particularly on the north side. Actually, particularly on the south side. Uh, truck traffic, there's a lot of truck track, there's a lot of truck related businesses in that area. There is concern on the part of those businesses that have high volumes of trucks. About the, the problems that, that they would incur if their, if their traffic was rerouted to commercial and developing residential areas. And, and then, of course, the idea of, you can see two traffic signals, think these little icons for them on. Central Avenue, one at Dakota and the other here at, uh, at the interchange. That would, um, accelerate access restrictions along, uh, Central Boulevard. This design, as you see here, is, is called kind of a, it's basically kind of a diamond. Interchange. You can see it kind of looks like a diamond, so you've got on and off ramps on the north and south sides of the interchange. And it has a loop ramp that's added in order to remove some of the left turn movements from that signal. Uh, where Park Hill Lane used. Okay? Next slide. So the study objectives, what we were trying to do is we entered into this broader picture with, again, on behalf of the city and, and the Sutherland LLC. Was to maintain the interchange functionality through the year twenty forty. Actually, now it's really kind of through twenty forty-two, so twenty year horizon into the future. We want to be able to maintain freight mobility and access along Highway one thirty-eight W. Retain Park Hill Lane as near as possible to its existing alignment. Uh, maintain separation of industrial and commercial traffic, and it, uh, promote safe and efficient business access. Provide clarity on road alignment, access configurations, where exactly are those roads gonna be? And extend Park Hill Lane southward to connect with exit one thirty-five, I believe that's part of your transportation system plan already. But it was an important part of the overall ideas. Next slide. So this is hard to see, um, but what I'm trying to show you here is that there were six different options that we. Evaluated, and this is what we call a single line sketch. So they're done by hand, single line sketches, we do put a lot of time into drafting this. First one on the top left is the adopted interchange area management plan, that's what exists today. The second one, um, was a tight diamond. Making it tighter to see if we could sustain, um, make room for. Park Hill Lane, as you can see, Park Hill Lane is still cul-de-sac at that point. Um, just south of Central Avenue. The third one, uh, was kind of what we call a folded diamond. Because it has three of the four diamond legs, but the fourth is kind of in the form of that clover leaf. So that clover leaf or that loop ramp allows for all movements to go, uh, southbound on I five. The, um. I'll say that that's, that, that was the essence, that was the genesis of the, of the alternative. Business and property owners wanted to see carried forward. They liked that idea, this one, as you can see, allows for. Uh, Park Hill Lane to continue to connect at that signalized intersection, uh, with, at the interchange. That creates some concerns and issues for ODOT, which we'll talk to about here in just a minute. But that was the starting place, what they didn't like so much about that one was. Speed signals, uh, in that proximity. They wanted to look for reduced speeds and maybe, uh, U-turn accommodation, U-turn capability for the existing businesses that are located adjacent. Through Central Avenue or both north and south side. On the bottom left-hand side, we started to look at different options that included roundabouts. Uh, the first one here actually ended up at the interchange with a five-legged roundabout. As five approaches coming into it, including Park Hill Lane. Notice, that's a pretty complex intersection to design and manage, and so. Uh, the group that we were working with and the next bad idea, uh, going forward. The one in the middle on the bottom. Uh, was another kind of version. This one was another way of trying to provide access to a, uh, diamond interchange. But we had with the, uh, signalized intersections, we had, uh, a, a. Access for Park Hill Lane was pushed over to the west. Through, uh, some of the other internal roadways. That wasn't like well, because again, they've started pushing truck traffic and such into the developing area. The last one, uh, here was a free roundabout option, that included roundabouts on both, so actually the interchange itself is served not by signals, but by roundabouts. With the third one. And that, while it had some intriguing possibilities. That was, uh, a significantly more expensive option to build. So kind of stepped away from that and went to. Uh, a better, a more, uh. A more detailed design, conceptual design, it wasn't single line, but now starting to look at the width of the roads. For the preserve, preserve, preferred alternative. And on that preferred alternative, we also modified different intersection control types. So if you go to the next slide. This was the preferred design. That the group ended up with, as you can see, it involves roundabouts at two places, at Dakota Street and at the. South off-ramp and on-ramp to the freeway. So, uh, and then we've got what we also identified in here, you can see pop property lines, the white. You can see it, the, the white boundaries between parcels there are property lines. So we went to the effort of trying to align some of these roadways, so that they, working with property owners and business folks, so that we would. Minimize disruption to their parcels and still provide access east, west, and north, south into the area. There's some, there's some, uh, east-west roadway somewhere within about the middle of this area that wasn't well defined yet, it could probably be added. Um, I think the property owners were okay with that, they kind of wanted to see how the area develops before they were very specific about where that, that particular line. So that takes you up to the point where, where we had a preferred kind of concept that we wanted to suggest, now if you wanted to go in any direction like this. Or even consider something like this, you would have to amend the IA MP. Or again, DOT's I M P, because it will not currently allow for that kind of a development, uh, or circulation. Um, now, so we got into the question of signal versus roundabout, and I think that's part of what you're here to talk about with us today. And so if you can go to the next slide.
Can I just ask one question? That wouldn't be us doing it, that would be ODOT doing that amendment, right?
Uh, ODOT would, ODOT would oversee the.
Yeah, it's there, it's there, I am, not ours, we just participate with them.
You participate, okay, that's right. So let me take you through, uh, I think this would be a nice kind of introduction to roundabouts, so that you get some idea of. Why they're being considered, not just here, but in other parts of Oregon and around. Okay, can you start it, and I'm gonna tell you when I want you to stop it and report, okay?
Sure.
Let me stop for just a second. Again, so this is a video, this is kind of an older video, you know, this is from the state of Kansas. I picked this one to show to you because it does the best job I've seen of all of them, and many states have built these kind of, uh, including Oregon. Have built these, uh, videos about roundabouts, but this one does a really good job, I think, for the, for the general public. People who aren't engineers to understand what they are and what they're doing.
If you've never driven a modern roundabout, chances are good, you will soon enough. They've been used very successfully throughout the world for more than twenty years. And beginning in the nineteen nineties, they've been used across the United States in a wide range of environments, including both urban.
Stop it altogether, my apologies.
If you've never driven a modern roundabout, chances are good, you will soon enough. They've been used very successfully throughout the world for more than twenty years. And beginning in the nineteen nineties, they've been used across the United States in a wide range of environments, including both urban and rural settings. The Kansas Department of Transportation and local governments are turning to this traffic control device more often as a means of managing traffic. By reducing conflicts, increasing intersection capacity, controlling speed, and most importantly, reducing crashes at intersections. Research has shown roundabouts to be considerably safer than typical intersections.
Classic study was the one done by the Insurance Institute for Highway Safety. Where they found roughly a forty percent reduction in all crashes. And about a seventy percent reduction in injury crashes. Which, which to me is the most significant advantage of a roundabout is the reduction in injury crashes. And a projected ninety percent decrease in fatal crash.
Dr. Russell's study of roundabouts in Hutchinson, Aleka, Manhattan, and North of Paola revealed another advantage of roundabouts, they greatly reduce delays.
And we're finding, uh, roughly, uh, fifty, fifty to eighty percent reductions in stopping and delay.
It's important that you know what they are and how to safely drive through them, and that's what this video is all about. Let's start with what a modern roundabout is not, it is not a traffic circle, it's also not a mini circle. A traffic calming device used in residential neighborhoods.
Uh, a mini circle is really, uh, an object. Really a circular object placed in the middle of an intersection without really changing anything else at the intersection. And it's really to get you to, it's an obstacle in the middle of the intersection to get you to slow down. Because you're not gonna be able to drive over it, you have to drive around it, roundabout is, is put in to. Slow you down, to get lots more traffic through the intersection. And it basically. You know, improve the intersection and invite traffic to come through it, instead of trying to get the bird.
First major difference between mini circles and modern roundabouts is that roundabouts have a yield at entry rule. This means traffic entering the roundabout must yield the traffic already in the roundabout. Another key difference between roundabouts and traffic circles is that modern roundabouts use deflection. They have splitter islands in the approach lane, forcing drivers to enter the intersection at safe angles and slower speeds. The third major difference is that roundabouts sometimes have a flare to entry. The entry often whitens or flares from one or two lanes of traffic to two or three lanes at the yield line to allow for increased traffic flow. Those differences help us define what a modern roundabout is. A roundabout is a circular intersection with a raised central island and splitter islands in the approach lanes. To slow and control the direction of traffic. Traffic traveling within the roundabouts has the right of way to vehicles approaching the intersection. Approaching vehicles yield at the entry until an opening in the roundabout is available. Once in the roundabout, vehicles circulate around the center island in a counterclockwise direction till they reach the desired street intersection. Roundabouts are being designed and built as an alternative to the traditional intersections for many reasons. However, the main reason is safety. Roundabouts can reduce the number of collisions by fifty to ninety percent compared to a traditional four-way intersection. This significant reduction in accidents is largely due to the lower number of conflict points. Conflict points are those areas where collisions could occur as traffic paths cross. At a traditional four-way intersection, there are thirty-two potential conflict points. In a four-way roundabout, that number is reduced to eight, and none of them are at right angles.
Now, at a roundabout, because you lessen that angle, the vehicles can, can strike each other. You really lessen the impact of the driver. And because of that. You really drop their chance for being injured. And what you see when you put in a roundabout is, you will still have some accidents. But they could be more sides wide, rear end, at a slow speed, and so your injury accidents just drop.
Roundabout intersections also enhance pedestrian safety. Reduce vehicle speed, reduce pedestrian to vehicle conflict points, and reduce length of crossing all contribute to a safer intersection for pedestrians. Roundabout intersections are able to handle a higher number of vehicles than standard intersections and still reduce delays. A higher number of vehicles are able to travel through the roundabout in less time, because they yield instead of stopping at a traffic light or a stop sign.
You, you hate to sit at a stop sign or a, a traffic signal with a red light when the traffic's coming, and you just be there for no reason. Uh. So really, the improvement delay is so important because. It's, it's all a matter of, it's the traffic form and group.
A study of roundabouts in Kansas confirmed the reduction in delays, here are a couple of examples. At the Rogers and Sheridan Roundabout in Aleka, the average intersection delay during the morning rush dropped from almost thirty-eight seconds to about twelve seconds. That's a decrease of sixty-nine percent. In the evening rush, the delay dropped from more than ninety seconds to about twelve seconds, a reduction of eighty-seven percent. In Paola on K sixty-eight, the intersection delay dropped from nineteen seconds to five and a half seconds, a reduction of more than seventy-seven percent. Reduced delays also benefit the environment by reducing fuel consumption and air pollution. Eliminating traffic signals at roundabout intersections reduces the annual maintenance and electricity cost of the intersection. These yearly savings are approximately five thousand dollars per intersection. Aesthetically, roundabouts are more attractive than traditional intersections because the large center islands can't be landscaped. Now that you know what they are and why they're safer, let's talk about how to drive a roundabout as you approach. Roundabout, you will notice a roundabout ahead sign with an advice.
Yeah, I'm skipping ahead.
About to allow the emergency vehicle, not blocking and.
Right there, okay.
Trucks and school buses.
Oh, no.
Such as fire trucks. Most roundabouts are also designed to handle trucks and school buses. Some people see a truck tire go over the apron in the middle or some tire marks there, and think the roundabout is too small. Actually, the apron, called a truck apron, is there just for that reason, to give trucks and buses the extra room they need. So if roundabouts are so wonderful, why do you hear people complain about them? Chances are good, they've never driven one.
In Hutchinson, there was a. Person or person that formed a group, organized group called the CAR, Citizens Against Roundabouts. And, uh, they put up billboards, lawn signs, and were very vocal and very adamant, uh, against them. And the Hutchinson Roundabout is one of the biggest success stories in the country. And the Hutchinson Roundabout is one of the biggest success stories in the country. Now, before they had a two-way stop, they had nineteen right angle clear, the nineteen previous ones, six were injury accidents. And two years since it's been in, they've had about six, what I call fender fenders, no injury accidents.
Accidents are downs from what they were before the roundabout was built. And, uh, matter of fact, one of our city councilmen who was opposed to the roundabout, uh, made a comment a few weeks ago that they think it's been working pretty good and maybe we ought to look at.
The Kansas Department of Transportation, in cooperation with.
Stop it there and let's move on to the next slide. So that gives you a quick overview and introduction. Now, let's talk a little bit about the existing conditions at Central and Victoria right now. Uh, my basic point is at the top of this slide, there are no, there's no immediate or urgent need for any intersection modifications at that intersection. The operating characteristics, this is according to ODOT's own analysis. The operating characteristics during the weekday E P P hour, which is the heaviest time when we put the greatest stress on the intersection. Only twenty percent of the intersection's capacity is being used for the critical. Average delay is only sixteen seconds. The level of service is C, which is very good in an urban area. And the ninety-fifth percentile Q, that is to say, ninety-five percent of the time, the Q is two vehicles or less on that, on that stop. In terms of safety characteristics, we went back and looked at the most recent five-year history for the intersection Dakota and Central, these again are ODOT's records. Four reported crashes in the last five years, in that most recent five-year period. One injury and three property damage only crashes. It translates into point zero five crashes per million entered vehicles. It's nowhere close to a, uh, to, to, to coming on for the radar screen of the state or any regional agency in terms of that crash rate. So you don't have a significant crash problem there today. You don't have a lot of delay there today, don't have a lot of queuing there today. Point that I'm trying to make here is that your decision, I hope this is good news, you don't have to do anything there right away. I mean, it's going to continue to grow in traffic, but those numbers that I gave were with the planned improvements on the north side of Dakota, of Central. Go to the next slide. So now what we did is we looked ahead and said, well, let's look at a project life cycle cost. Let's compare a traffic signal to a roundabout across the twenty-year life, which we take it from twenty twenty-two to twenty forty-two. In terms of construction costs, the roundabout's going to cost about one and a half million dollars more than the city. Auto passenger delay, as you can see, drops significantly with the roundabout, that's about a sixty-five percent reduction in delay. Truck delay is about seventy percent reduction. It's in the lower left-hand corner. And safety is an eighty percent reduction in safety-related costs due to the installation of the roundabout. So if you put those things together, what we do is a net present value analysis, which is to take everything to current value, current, current dollars, and then compare them equally. Move to the next slide, please. And you can see that the roundabout, in that present value over the twenty-year life of it, is about two million dollars less in costs than the city. The thing to pay, pay attention to here as well is we'll look at where those benefits are coming from. On that, on that graph, they're coming from a much lower delay, which is that green bar, and a much, much lower, uh, safety cost, crash-related cost, which is blue bar. Now, we're looking at, okay, so we, the, uh, this is across a twenty-year life cycle, life cycle. But in fact, those intersections are going to be longer than twenty years. And after twenty years, those benefits that you see at the top of that bar, they just keep improving. Because the intersection will still operate that same. Okay, so let me go to the next slide, please. There's other considerations you want to think about for a roundabout, uh, that you may have thought about from an environmental point of view. It's less fuel consumption, because it's all day long, it's operating this way, it's year control. It's less greenhouse gas emissions, and there's no near-term need to widen Central Avenue, which would be a significant cost. In terms of access, the U, the roundabouts give U-turn accommodation, which benefits the, the businesses adjacent to Central on, on the northern and south sides. And wrong, wrong-way movements that ODOT was concerned about in one of those designs is, are, are reduced or eliminated with the roundabout, virtually eliminated. Heads and bikes are safer in this environment, uh, slower speed of, of vehicles through the intersection, better visibility for pedestrians, and reduced exposure, they don't spend as much time out in the same area as the vehicle. And from a community perspective, this was the preferred option for the business and property owners in that area. And it can also serve as a gateway treatment that sets someone apart, that introduces people to Suburban, maybe that Chamber of Commerce person might like this idea, a roundabout introduction to the city of Suburban. So let me go to the final slide, which is the summary. There is no immediate or urgent need to modify the Central and Dakota intersection. It's going to work as it is for at least four or five, uh, more years. Life cycle cost of the roundabout is expected to be less than a traffic signal. And the current I A M P, if you're interested in changing anything in, in the current I M P, it's going to have to be amended. If the preferred circulation concept is decided. Any questions or comments?
I probably, you're using data from ODOT, is that correct?
Yes.
Consider it was there, because I'm looking at their report. And it shows twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two, the later. Doesn't let me draw any one of it, since twenty twenty-two.
What, for what, safety?
For the numbers, the crash rate. There's quite a few different things.
So we did a five-year, we did, looked across the, crashes are rare events, so you need to look across a long time to get a sense of what's happening. And, um, we looked at the most recent available five-year period, because it's from Oregon Public Transportation, and it's for twenty eighteen through twenty twenty-two.
That's right, twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-two.
Right.
We're in twenty twenty-four, and this would be a real part of the traffic has increased quite a bit. Those are outdated numbers.
Those are the most recent available from anybody.
Yeah, I'm aware, I just wanted to, yeah, you said per, and I, but I didn't understand.
Yeah, that was my one, my comment was, uh, when you said that it wasn't that needed, the light wasn't needed now, uh, with your numbers on the amount of traffic. I'm a little concerned because we, we have like ninety homes coming in. We still don't count. We have, um, five apartment buildings coming in right now. Um, and the, the clinic, traffic, and, and so.
So we counted all existing, this was actually ODOT's analysis.
From twenty twenty-two, none of those reported.
Actually, we. No, I don't, no, that's right, but for the operational analysis, we took existing traffic counts, which were done recently.
All of those are, are coming in the next year.
They are, yes, that's right, we call them planned improvements. And those planned construction improvements, we added the traffic that we expect those to generate on top of the existing volumes to come up with that.
I think one of the things that concerns us is that whether we like roundabouts or don't like them, we were told by ODOT to look at a twenty or twenty-five year for, if this thing were to happen. And that, we can get a traffic light put in, almost a B.
I would, I, I, I think I would dispute a twenty to thirty-year horizon for a roundabout, and I would also dispute the cost estimates for the traffic. You got to compare apples to apples. Around the traffic signal, uh, ODOT estimated it at one point six million, reestimated it at four point nine million. Because when you put that traffic signal right now, the stop, the two-way stop works fine. Uh, as long as you have a three-legged intersection there. In fact, ODOT's analysis says even for the next twenty years, if it stayed a three-legged intersection, two-way stop would be fine. The issue comes when you add a fourth leg on the, what is that, south side, yeah, on the south side. That's when you need to do something. In order to add that side, that fourth leg, you got to build out the road there as well. You got to reconstruct a bit of that intersection, that's what ends up being about four point nine million, not one point six. Same thing with, so we compared apples to apples, we said, here's the project area that we have to work in, whether it's a roundabout or a traffic signal. Roundabout was six point two million. And the traffic signal was four point nine. You can probably get by on the cheap and put something in as a temporary traffic signal now for less than that amount. But you, but if you do that as a city council, you just got to realize and recognize that you're not, that's not the end of your expenses. You're going to have to spend more for a later roundabout.
How do we argue with ODOT about their timeframe?
I didn't.
How do we argue with ODOT about their timeframe on the.
Well, I, I, I don't know, I mean, uh, what I'd tell you is, is that ODOT, ODOT has put in a lot of roundabouts around the state. In fact, they just opened two of the Bend area in the last month. They have, um.
Yeah, but that's Bend, we're talking about Suburban.
You're talking about Suburban, but you're also, yeah, that's right. I don't know, I, I mean, it's not, it's a matter of funding and where that funding comes from. ODOT right now has no money, as far as I know. Um, I don't know if that's a forever situation, I don't think that's a twenty or thirty-year situation for ODOT. I think that's probably, that's, that's the situation they're in right now. But that changes as funding levels change, according to, you know, many different things. How much money comes from the federal government, how much money, uh, comes from gas taxes, how they change their funding, uh, allocation.
Why is there a bigger pressure for the roundabout from that? I don't quite understand why the pressure for the roundabout person being the traffic, and I know you're saying that they're safer, they're cost-effective over, over time, but there, we are a rural roundabouts, I don't know that that's, we're not Portland, we're not there, we are a suburban.
I'm really happy to be here, talking to you, because I'm a rough emotion. I come from this community, I spent my, my first twenty years living in this community and spending time in Suburban. So I think, so I can relate to the environment and place, and I'm telling you, just because you're from rural country, rural part of Oregon, doesn't mean you don't deserve to have fewer crashes and less delay at some of these intersections. Remember the one out at, uh, Melrose and, uh, Garden Valley Boulevard? That intersection, you know what I'm talking about? That was, when I was growing up, a lot of fatal crashes. That's an ideal place for roundabouts, because that will help solve those crashes, ninety percent reduction in fatal crashes. I don't think you're going to have fatal crash, as many, very many fatal crashes, I hope not, at, uh, Dakota and, um, and Central. But one of the things you got to think about is you're coming all the way from Elton, it's the first signal people run into, don't run into. Their first, as I say, it's the first signal they encounter. And they're at a high speed, and you're trying to slow them down before they get to that point. One of the things a roundabout will do is slow them down to twenty miles an hour.
Oh, not American.
No, it's, no, it's physical, they can't, they can't drive any faster than.
If, if we could kind of wrap this up, because I, I think what you're suggesting is exactly the route we've suggested and been trying to suggest, and don't understand why you don't hear it. We want to put in a basic street light that satisfies the needs of the community now. Not build this big four point nine million thing, but in twenty years, take a look at it and then compare and contrast, do we want to make these additional improvements that you've talked about on the signal itself? Or do we want to move forward with the roundabout? So your time is done, and I'd like to invite ODOT to come up and give, uh, additional answers, because we're on board with you. We want to save Park Hill, we want to save those.
Twenty years to such.
Well, let's let ODOT come up and explain that. Because if we get around that next year, that's a different story, thank you for your time, really, yeah, seriously. Yeah, I don't, I didn't mean that, because we want to still be a partner with you guys. Let's get it, let's get the truth, I'm like, this timeline.
Uh, first, I'd like to acknowledge Wayne, um, and Killson, I mean, they are one of the leaders in, in the community, especially with roundabouts. Presented a lot of great information, the majority of which I can't dispute. I mean, there are definitely lots of pluses to roundabouts. As we've talked in the past, we can make either one work in this location. We can support frankly either one. It's more of a desire, we talk about being able to fund a roundabout. They are more expensive. By basis, um, I don't disagree that maybe a signal one-six that was in, I think, as a report we provided does seem low, I don't disagree with that, of the traffic folks. Don't know how much input they had onto that, I think that's, that is on the lowest side. But I also know we do have roundabouts currently funded in our transportation plan for nine to ten million dollars, the, the Melrose intersection that we spoke about. We've got that in our current plan to fund and design in a project. And so there is, in our opinion, there is a significant difference between the two. As we've shared, ODOT doesn't currently have funding for either one of these projects. The city wants to step up, potentially fund a signal at this location. I think that's great, that's something that is less, we think they're affordable versus a roundabout. Currently, and as Wayne's pointed out, there aren't significant operational safety issues at this. So trying to go out and grant money to fund a roundabout, it's not going to be successful, you can't show that big reason why you need to do something. And like I said, ODOT doesn't have the money, um, currently. We're out in our, right now, we're working on our twenty-seven thirty step, that's going to be the twenty-seven thirty, thirty-three or thirty-three, thirty-six before if it was a priority and ODOT had the funding, before we would even schedule a project. Someone else would have to step forward with the funding. If the, the citizens and property owners on the southwest side of that want to come up with the funding, great. I mean, or if the city wants to come up with the funding, great. Again, we can support either direction currently, we have an approval for a traffic signal there. If that's not the direction the city would like to go, if you want to go a direction of a roundabout, we can modify our recommendations, modify an approval, we can get an approval for a roundabout as well. There are definitely, especially from a traffic standpoint, there are definitely safety features of a roundabout, like Wayne spoke to, I mean, it slows traffic down, you have less conflict points, it allows those movements without stopping. I'm concerned about pedestrian, we hear more about pedestrian, we have protected phases with the signal for pedestrian crossings that get talked about. A roundabout, you have crosswalks at each one of those locations, but again, traffic is moving, it doesn't stop, so you don't have those protective phases for pedestrians. You know, so there are gives and a little give and take on each one, but again, we can support either one.
Well, that's where I'm a little confused, because even if we had the money, we couldn't do it till I got, uh, approved by ODOT through the I M, right?
For the roundabout?
Yes.
Yes, it would require a, a qualification to the I M.
And how long is that going to take?
It would require, okay, Mike correct.
Okay, that's where I started. So if we had ten million dollars to put in a roundabout, you'd let us do that?
Well, yes. The one against the I M, so yes, we could enter into an agreement and let you build around.
Okay, so if the property owners can give us ten million dollars, we could do it.
Yeah, we've got more. On the north side, as you know, there is a big ditch there, it does have wetlands in it. As pointed out earlier, the I M calls at some point for like a five-lane section. Again, we don't anticipate the need to go to a five-lane section for a long time. We talked about placing a signal in here to meet kind of that current, kind of two-way, three-lanes. Kind of two-way, three-lane section, um, for a signal, but perhaps install those poles out far enough to where. In the future, at some point, it could accommodate that five-lane section without having to potentially throw that away. And so, um, so you don't have, you don't have to redo the whole signal setup. Uh, so there's things to do there. There's concerns, I know, from the property owners about us cutting off access. Not just to those driveways along the highway, um, especially on the south side, but also Park Hill from the ramp. Uh, right now, no operational safety issues, that's not gonna happen, we're not. We don't have any intent of changing that right now until we have those safety or operational issues. And I can't forecast when that's gonna occur. Based on the volumes and their operational level of the highway right now, it's not gonna be for quite a while. Uh, the I M specifically has Park Hill being removed from that ramp. Because it's inconsistent with our standards and guides on interchanges right now. And that's why that's in there at the I M. We don't wanna jeopardize our ability to, um, future growth of that interchange. Um, by having that become a rolling street to the highway, because then that hampers. Um, our ability to expand if needed when that does occur, or it just makes it cost more. Because now, as things get built around that, we do have to move it, we've gotta start buying those leases and other things, and it just costs more money.
So, I, I wanna, I wanna nail this down too. If we could get a roundabout inserted, adopt it in the I M and get Federal Highway to recognize it, we could then. Uh, acquire monies to help pay for it. I mean, that's the linchpin, right?
If it's in a plan, then you can apply for monies.
That's what I'm saying.
More federally held.
Right. And so, i- if we, we stayed the course and pressed pedal to the metal. And it reached a level of needing uh, attention. Uh, one of the things we might wanna do is open up the I M and get a roundabout approved within it. But we can't do it to others' numbers that justify it, right?
Well, right now, we have no reason to open up the I M, and there's no operational or safety issue.
That's what I'm saying.
Or us, if the city would like to open that up or pay for us to open that up and reevaluate it.
Yeah.
We can, but that's.
And then come up at ten million dollars for a roundout. It's a little depressing to think about that. You know, I'm not against a roundabout.
You know, one, one reason why, at least from my standpoint, one reason why we're here is. We've had lots of conversations over the last fifteen, twenty years about this side of the highway. Or a high five, kind of on that west side. Uh, what is our plan? What are we doing? When are we gonna do something? Uh, we've now gotten to a point where traffic volumes increasing to where we have something that meets, can meet the requirements. You know, a signal, it could be a roundabout, but we have, we've been asked for a long time to try and do something so folks know what's gonna happen in this area. We've gotten to the point where, okay, yeah, you can install a signal. It's been a long time coming, the city's been asking for something forever, so is the property owners. And so, here we are, and now, I guess I'm getting a little confused because. It almost sounds like maybe they don't want anything, I guess. I'm not sure what they want. Um. They're right, operationally, you don't need it right now. Does the city desire it? It sounds like there's a desire for it. Sounds like there's some citizens, maybe on the north side, that want it, because it definitely does help operations. Whether roundabout or a signal, it helps people get in and out of that area safer. We have an opportunity to do something, but again, that's up to the city, what you wanna do and how you wanna move forward.
Is there a way to, it sounds like potentially in the future, probably concerning the business that are on that side of Park Hill? That they are not, they don't wanna lose their businesses or access to their businesses, you know, consumers losing access to their businesses. Is there a way to grandfather the minutes, that roof not be blocked off, even though that's the current code of. Because we, we have a lot of existing businesses that are vital to our community on that street.
Um. Yeah, go ahead.
So, yeah, so, uh, just to answer your question, so, you know, we did an interchange management plan jointly with the city of Sullivan. So we use your transportation. Yeah, yeah. We looked at a number of different interchange processes. If we were to ever go back and. Uh, uh, by the I M, there's no guarantee that we've come up with a solution. Uh, that they came up with, particularly because it does violate our standard. I'm not sure that we would have, that behind the pool, uh, to make a modification. Like that, because it's critical, important, the interstate, what's going on, uh, in that area. That'll be built, as, as part of that interchange plan, there's also an access management plan. They talk about enclosures of other, uh, roadways, or making certain ones that need to be right in, right out for operational safety reasons. Uh, and it's also access control, which is letting access, right? Um, but one thirty-eight is critical, he's got pizza two about where the existing ramps are, where they kind of gets back in, which is critical to. Uh, uh, having that, uh, interstate on me up there. This doesn't work.
If you take this plan off, provided, eventually the plan is to shut off Park, right?
Uh, uh, yeah, so that, so. That wouldn't, so I guess what really what we recommend, and I think it was in the report from the Table Center Associates, something we really agree with. Um, I think we have a meeting set up to, to talk, uh, somewhat about this. And look at funding, uh, an opportunity to, uh, really need to develop a local street plan for that area. So, all we provide is a, a plan for the major infrastructure in that area and what it could look like in the future. Uh, I think really, what's really gonna be critical is just to determine where the additional rights of the way will be. So how the businesses can be served internally off of an, an extension of Dakota Southbound. And however, you know, you're using green lines on the map, it can be wherever you want. Uh, but I think that there needs to be some direct working with those properties. Uh, so that we don't have a problem in the future and something that works.
Well, Mike, just to follow councillor's question. Putting the light doesn't seal the deal on the other options, including Park Hill. Because we still wanna work together, fight you on some of those things. And, uh, you know, and try to create a win-win on the, and scenario on the other things. By putting that light in, that'd prohibit us from carrying on a good fight, right? And we.
Fight all you want.
All right.
And what are you talking about, you've been looking at, putting in a new. That ten years down the road, twenty years down the road? Or five?
We don't, we don't really know. So the interchange as it is, is very old style. Um, not new, but at the same time, aren't really have capacity to operate particularly safe. Um, likely, I think we'll be anticipating if it's on that signal or roundabout, whatever intersection control goes in at Dakota. You know, it gives the opportunity to do different things. Perhaps you're acquiring additional right away and building a local street. Uh, perhaps we're improving Highway one thirty-eight itself. Why to get up and relive it, so. There's better bicycle lane sidewalks and all of that. Um, so there's lots of different options, and, and I think we're anticipating that we probably won't see an interchange project developed with ramps. Until really development occurs in that Southwest quadrant, if there's a decision, or, or something else major happens, perhaps it's development elsewhere. Generates significant amount of traffic, but it'll be, it'll be a while. Where our, our focus is really on Highway one thirty-eight at this point. Um, there may be some interim access measures that we take in the meantime to start development before what three times work is. Uh, goes in place, but many people follow that plan and that interchange.
One thing to point out, as we've talked about a signal, a signal can also, in some future time, if we are having impact with some of those access points along. A signal can accommodate U-turn, we're, we have several signals that we're installing that do accommodate U-turn movements. So if that area, those have to expand, those have to build out to address operational or safety issues. To the point where we are now starting to risk or restrict accesses to right in, right out. We have other options to help, help alleviate that concern over access.
We're making a decision, right?
Well, you've already made a decision and directed us to continue with the, uh, signals. But then, as I mentioned earlier, also continue the good fight with the other things, with the business owners as, as it goes. Uh, we do know that there is significant interest in developing in that area right now, it's like speed. Uh, and, uh. Whatever you want, if you want us to stop and not put in a signal and just wait. You are the bosses, we haven't started anything yet, but it, it would be helpful. Uh, to, to know, you want us to continue based on your previous direction, or you want us to stop? Right, you did, I'm just saying, I, I'm giving you the opportunity to change your mind if you would.
Uh, opening that up after our.
Yeah. I, I just, you know, is the consensus, the council, to continue based on your original direction?
Uh, our next, uh, topic is housing and homeless task force.
Yes, and I'm trying not to be too verbose, uh, I, I was, uh, you know, as you know, we talked some time ago about what are we gonna do about. Working together to kind of create a mechanism that would instill development for people who just simply. Either can't find a home to live in at all, uh, or have a job, but. Because of no inventory and the high cost. And so, you have before you in the framework, similar to what we did with the Fire Services Working Group on page twenty-two of your agenda. And, oh, let me pass this around. So since we had the discussion the last council meeting, and, uh. Posted this on our website, we have six people who have actually said, we'd like to be on this task force, and it's a good diverse group. And, and so, what we would like.
Can we please be quiet in the audience for just a minute? Thank you.
Uh, what we would like is just a consensus to. Uh, proceed with this group, we would meet with this group, we create a resolution of creation, uh, with the timeline. Uh, reviewing the suggested goals, refining those goals, perfecting those goals, and bring those back at the next council meeting. Uh, what, what I'm asking from you tonight is that you would agree that we could include this group of people. Who, uh, have volunteered to begin the homeless task, home, uh, housing and homelessness task force. Uh, well, no, the motion and final vote will be a resolution and we bring it at their next council meeting. But if you, again, by consensus, agree that these folks can be on it, we, the staff will convene them. We'll do a little mini workshop with them and gather that, then we'll, we kind of like to use resolutions for you to create task forces and committees. Uh, and, uh, that's what we bring back at the next council meeting. Yeah, I, I, I was impressed by the diversity of the group. Uh, there was a guy named Sherman Hong, he was one of the original folks involved when we started, uh, Hastings Village. And then you got bankers and you have real estate agents who can help counsel us and advise us on property values and. That, but as you'll see, I think one of the key things that we're gonna wanna do is research the history, anticipate future housing needs and trends. And then identify possible resources and create a plan for you, uh, to consider. Uh, this goes in line with the workforce housing agenda. Uh, that we've created with ISEC or through the governor's office and Greg Wolf and his staff. And, uh, we'll be having a special meeting this Thursday with every major employer in town. And those, uh, federal, state and county service agencies, whose job it is to help with housing. To include Hayden, uh, which is the largest residential developer in the state that are coming to the table. And, uh, we're gonna talk about how we could create a first-ever, uh. Workforce housing community that has a diversity of housing from single-family homes to apartments to duplexes. Uh, that we could, working together, buy down the cost of what it built, our home costs. And when Murphy Frywood comes to the table and says, I got an employee that wants to come work here. That, at the end of the day, the people that be living here, we those people that work here, and it can stimulate economic development above all that. So, this is a good parallel and support for that. Yes, sir. Uh, you know, I need to apologize too, because I threw, I, I couldn't remember, but we generally have, uh. Three councillors, not to equate as a quorum, so councillor, uh, Whitaker. I knew Mayor Sumner and councillor Woods wanted to be on, from the very beginning, from Latingbury in the city, so we knew you, we, you wanted to be involved. We assume that. You, uh, would also be willing to serve, but we should have threw your name in there as a hold card. If you don't, uh, any other council member, other than the name Brousman, uh, is welcome to serve on this committee.
Yes.
Okay. Are you all okay with that? Okay, so let's move on to, uh, Hastings Village new structure, uh, as you heard tonight in some commentary. Uh, and in my staff report, I, I was looking at the staff about two weeks ago, and we're looking at this, and I was looking at a staff member I could dump it on. Uh, you know, and I realized, I, I have a, a, a management team that's pretty busy, you know, uh. From a public works director to police chief, to community development director, to any of them. And I just decided that I'd take on the lead for the group. Uh, and we would form a new group, create rules, uh, but we needed a catalyst to help do this. And one of my former sworn enemies, uh, uh. Dana came to mind, I told the story to, uh, the group, I sent out an email in the morning, on a Friday morning, to the. Homeless, uh, response team that we have internally and said, what do you think about Dana Foley? And, uh, the responses were curious, I mean, I, I mean, I'm curious about Dana, why him? And I said, wow, he's a former special forces army soldier and somebody that's strong in character and will, and, uh. I'm gonna ask him if he'd do it. And lo and behold, I was out there meeting, uh, Danny and the leadership team. And Dana pulls up in his hot rod motorcycle, and I said, hey, Danny, you drew the short straw today, would you be willing to do this? And he has, and he's been remarkable. Other people go, Dana Foley, really? But I'd like to ask Dana to come up and talk about his progress today and where we're, where we think we're gonna go, uh, heading into the future. Before, before he comes up. And I asked her, is this, is this part of your CD manager? No, no, good luck, I got another fifty minutes on that.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, City Council. Uh, I'm Dana Foley for anybody that knows me. Okay, so I've kind of only been given one week to tackle this project. The ultimate goal is to work with the residents and make the businesses very happy to have a book at this camp. So, we wanna cure the public, make them satisfied and happy with it. Bottom line is, by the time I get through this park, it'll have a park setting. The tents will give Aaron his forty-foot setback from the west wall of the fence line, we're going to move all the tents in line. And we'll get them corrected, uh. Things we've done so far is we're gonna catalog all the residents, first, last name, date of birth. And a place of where they reside at for the police to have access to knowing everyone there at the camp. The other thing we're going to do, we've been doing trash pickup with everyone in the camp, even the residents, it helped out. We loaded up a container uh, with Aaron's help of loading us that four-ten. The other thing we're doing, and if you go by, you'll actually notice that the area looks very clean. It's uh, more to the eye of the public, satisfied. On the south end, I've contacted the business owner down there and asked him what he would like to see come out of it. And he was very pleasant about it, very easygoing. Ended up telling me really nothing. Wants to be grow some blackberry bushes along the fence line. But what we've done is all the residents got together and they've taken and taken all the debris off the fence. We've mended the fences and we've put it into the dumpster. So that's cleared off. So as of tomorrow, by the end of the day, we'll actually put up a privacy fence utilizing some of the items that are there at the uh, camp. So that way there, he has customers coming in, they will not be able to look right in and see the camp itself. We're, we're doing incident reports. We're forwarding them to the police, so they have access to the incident reports of anything that's going on at the camp that needs to be addressed. Um, basically, uh, Keller lumber stepped up. They're willing to donate uh, wood chips instead of bringing in gravel. That's a temporary, so it doesn't affect the wetlands. It makes it look pleasant. Uh, I have some contacts with Clyde. They're willing to donate three or four picnic tables. Once we get it, the tents all realigned. For the center to be basically a picnic area because living out of a tent is pretty hard to have a meal. So it'll give them a little bit of freedom also. Also contains them inside of the camp area, so they don't go into the public side and they're not hanging out in town being a nuisance. So to keep them there, you give them some privileges. So basically, we'll wind up doing this like a military camp. And when we get down, like I said, it will look very pleasing, so. On the other hand, just to interject, there was only, one of my admins mentioned that there's only one death. That was Josh Gomez and he passed from the cold. It was not from the fire. We're also working with fire department, so that when we place these tents, Aaron informed me there should be about a ten-foot space between tents. So if there is a fire caused for whatever reason, it will not pass on to the other tent. Never reoccur that. So, any question?
One thing I want from you is again, not on a vote, but I, I don't want to make these uh, park rules uh, uh, a, a formal city manager decision. I'd like us, as a team, to make that decision. And if you're okay with the park rules, as we've been working with them, uh, I'd like you to tell me so, so I can take the word draft off. We're going to create a binder and every tenant is going to get those rules. He's going over them, they're going to sign it. And we'll have that in a binder in terms of accountability. So if you're okay with it, just nod your head or as in Joe Grousman, wake up. And uh, okay, he's away. Pardon? It is. Yeah, we know. Uh, and uh, the, the new leadership group, what's five, we narrowed them down to Danny, Carrie and Carl. Yeah, and then Mary, she's our uh,
Mary Ann.
Mary Ann, uh, she's our supply sergeant. So, and he's our uh, sergeant major. Under commander. That was made tonight about spot smoke detector. We're pursuing that right away.
Good, enter.
All right.
I, I just want to say one thing, Dana. I've known you for many years, not on a personal level, playing the means, but we know each other.
Right.
And thank you for stepping up and doing this.
One of me is going to be on. You know, we need somebody that can be down there like what you're doing.
Right.
I just want you to know, I really appreciate you.
Well, we had one, uh, the members leave today. And it wasn't, he admitted he had a substance abuse problem and he was a veteran, which I kind of favor. Uh, at the camp, we have two other veterans there. But uh, he went up past story today to put himself into a, uh, you know, to rehabilitate him. And he wants to go back with his family back down here. So, yeah. It is noticeably better down there. I'll walk by this weekend. Give me, give me a month. And if I come to see at the unemployment line, that may Jerry, what's happening?
If you sort of plan to keep it to a minimum and not, you know, bringing in more people or
Yes.
Every day, we're going to make it better. I mean, the, the residents there wanted to, you know, they do.
I, I have good connections with uh, with the services in Roseburg.
Yes, yeah, the B S O, yes, yep, yep. I'm we're on it already. I've already taken the veterans to the B S O and started their benefit package, uh,
About like adapt and?
Adapt, I know Johnny Farmer, yep, yep. So, yeah, I'll be getting over there too. Uh, biggest thing was I thought the trash needed to be addressed right away.
Yeah.
And there's some other issues. Um, so we got that out of the way, but as time goes on, yes, I, I will go into and contact the others. We're going to put up a board of announcements for the residents there that know what's going on and what's available. Uh, but actually I took two of the veterans, they went in, went through the process to see in the B S O and start their claim. It may not happen right away, but down the road, it will take place, which will give them the money to go out outside of the park and start their own life, so.
I just want to say that, you know, one of the things we really do, I try to just hire good people and stay out of the way and not interfere with them. Except for her, we were worthless. Uh, no, just kidding. But he had, I, he's just taking the ball and run. I, we've not like micro-managed him one bit. He comes to meetings and tells us what he wants to do and, or what he has done and it's just been great. So thank you, Dana.
CD manager report.
Yeah, this will be really quick. Uh, PILT stands for payment in lieu of taxes. You do that when you bring in a business and you put them in what's called an enterprise zone. So our lands are enterprise zone qualified. So if a business comes here and they need all the, the state qualifications, they actually uh, get a ten-year payment on the property tax. But they, they can't get it unless we approve and it requires a negotiation between us and them. So it, when you meet with a company and say like with, this is Murphy Plywood, right? Their property taxes would normally be around two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand dollars. Well, you negotiate a PILT payment and say, look, man, that's a lot of money. Uh, why don't you make a contribution back to our general fund to help pay for something or help back up? So theirs has been about a hundred and thirty-six?
Yep.
Hundred thirty-six thousand dollars a year. Well, we created the Urban Renewal Agency, Elaine Howard estimated that they were done with their PILT and whatever tax revenues they had to pay would go in as distributed by way of urban renewal. Well, we didn't. We got the PILT payment. So essentially, we've got a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollar windfall on the general fund side and a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollar shortfall on urban renewal side. We wanted to seek your counsel. It's since urban renewal is pushing the four hundred thousand dollar level in terms of the approved monies. Would you like us to hang on to that and put, so if we put it in the general fund, you wouldn't necessarily be spending it unless you wanted to bring you back in appropriation. But it would go into our ending cash position, strengthening our general fund going into next year. But then next year, we need to know that that money's wouldn't come. The other option is, is do fifty-fifty, give fifty to urban renewal and fifty of it to general fund. Or just give the entire amount to urban renewal. I would just say, since urban renewal doesn't have any expectation of large expenditures this year, the loss of that revenue isn't a deal kill. Going forward, it could be. So uh, we just wanted those unique things.
Is there any expectation or
That up, but we do have a more expense associated with Hastings Village now. Because I'm, my heart is not doing those.
Everything's taxpayer funds, just be honest about that. But again, we're still encouraged uh, and uh, excited about receiving six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And whatever monies we expend, even to, we're going to reimburse ourselves. So at the end of the day, we'll may spend these PILT funds, but when those monies come, we'll immediately pay ours and then use the rest of monies, move forward with uh, completing improvements at Hastings, but then uh, moving forward with investing those monies in a homeless, some sort of uh, homeless responses and which this task force is going to create in the future. Yeah, you seen the spreadsheet, about twenty things that Sir Patrick has completed. So yeah. Well, if you don't do anything immediately, it's just going to sit in the general fund and go, move on. Yeah, she needs to do some. Or we don't do anything and it just goes in the general fund and becomes part of her. It, it just becomes a part of our ending balance going into next year. Never thought it. Can we? Yeah, we can. You know, this is the first positive contribution you've made to a county this year. I just want to say, that's great. That was great. I, I think that's brilliant. What do you think, Mayor? I think council members? Right, that concludes my report.
Other councilor comments? Remember, monthly meeting time is limited. Please ask questions or make statements that are likely to benefit the groups. Individual comments and questions that can be handled on a one-on-one basis should be handled outside the meeting.
Actually, I have one thing. I, I started to think about our, our office staff. And they're like crazy. And people go in there and they're these nice ladies who always have a smile and
Alright, great.
Thank you.
What about Roberta? Good, I thought you started to turn a little ray and I started to, no.
I will make sure that they all know that. Recognize it, Gary. Thank you. I do agree. We have great, great people.
Oh, that's nice. Thank you.
Yeah, I had an opportunity to, we're talking about Hastings Village. I had an opportunity to go down there last Friday and it was a by opening. Since they, they believe they didn't sleep a lot Friday night. Um, probably not the reasons but I was just really I'm just, I'm just, I'm thankful that he already left, but I'm thankful that we did, that we brought, that we brought Dana on so that he can start tackling some of those issues. And I'm kind of excited to see where that goes. And I'm glad that we started cataloging, cataloguing all of the uh, individuals living there. And it's, you know, we're seeing some improvements. When I was down there, we saw that there was a lot of uh, movement going on in terms of cleanup. Uh, lots of cleanup going on, which was great. Um, so I think that having someone there that's managing in a positive, forward-moving direction is good. So I think that I am looking forward to seeing what he's going to be doing in the, in the future, next month.
Council Whitaker.
I only would like to recognize uh, Ashley Higgins, who's my neighbor, but she's also the officer here. It's a pleasure to live around her family. And it's a pleasure to know that she is on our police force and she's doing all those things that
That's what's Molly.
Always talk about the light and the roundabout and I still don't understand where everybody is on this like what the big deal is, where you can't just put a light in but knock off Park Hill. And I don't feel like we got a really good answer about that yet. Um, so that happened just as I am before we agreed to. Go ahead. Still lost, but, and I felt like the Kittleton group came and gave a really good report. They put a lot into it. I was, to be honest, I was surprised by um, the way you reacted to that guy. I felt like you really
Oh, I know him really well.
And then, you know, just it was unprofessional and I apologize. That you might not apologize to me.
Yeah. I, we, we've been in meetings together for dozens of months, I guess, so.
The one thing I would say that, that I heard them say was that we can put a stoplight someday down the road. They may want to do something with the rest of that stuff. And knowing how the government operates, that someday is going to be a long ways because they really don't see a need to change anything right now. So we can put the light in and nothing else is going to change for years, for the actual life.
And he also said that uh, ODAT does not care if we decide to put in a light for a roundabout. We just have to pay for it. And it hasn't risen to the level that we needed for safety. So we can do either one.
I also out of this presentation seems that the light at Park Lane with the roundabout or light is more specific to what was going to happen on Park Lane. Not the light at uh, Dakota. And that's where I think there's a separation. We're talking about Dakota and not addressing the Park Lane at this time.
Well, you know, when we, we've been working with these people for a long time, including Kittleson, I've known him for years, that's Yeah, I mean, yeah, I get me part time. Uh, but uh, our number one choice was to put a roundabout right there at Park Hill and have uh, all five you know, connect like they do in Bend and other places. Uh, I, I think uh, Kittleson didn't think we'd have a good shot, Aaron, of ever getting ODAT to buy into that. Wasn't that it? Too close to
A lot of connectivity in the freeway, they don't like that.
Yeah.
Because that's against the, their regulation. They can't have a local street connected onto an armory. And so it's bigger than us. Park Hill won't be cut off until that interchange needs improved. And so that's when those discussions would happen. So it it would need to have some serious warrant, um, that we're not even remotely close to according to the funding categories and phase.
You can see by the people that showed up or how many showed up.
Right, right. Well, and that's what this is, what the ODAT was trying to lay out was the phased approach to everything. Um, and it, so the signal at Dakota, then it would go three lanes, five lanes. You know, there's lots of avenues that they would take before cutting off any access, before cutting off Park Hill and doing those improvements.
Yeah.
And they're more affordable and they're beneficial to all the businesses, so.
And most of those people were from two primary neighborhoods, Fairway Estates and Moses Estates. And I saw almost ten people from, well, my former neighbors that were out in the audience. And I saw almost 10 people from, well, my former neighbors that were out there, including John Van Dooch. Anyway, and then, so yeah, a lot of people were interested in wanting that light in there.
Why? They're not crazy. From what I know, they're not crazy about the roundabout.
Well, I think they just wanted a light now.
Yeah. Because they're going to buy it far and down the road.
Well, and that's what I didn't understand. Last time when they presented, it was, it was at least 10 to 20 years down the road and it was going to be $9 million then. When we get to that, even 10 years from now, you know that's going to be way more than $9 million.
Well, my feeling is, is if we have the money and you guys thought like we could do it, we could do it. But we don't have the money, first of all. And secondly, the only other way of doing it is to get ODOT Federal Highway to contribute to it. But you can't get them to contribute to it till they approve it and put it in the IAM. It's got to be in a plan for...
But you also still... But you do have to remember you're taking a bunch of property there for some of those other businesses as well, which would be why maybe you wouldn't immediately do it if you had $10 million.
Right.
And property acquisition, what land building, a lot of those costs are variable, change the roundabout. Get me in the...
Okay, so...
All right, sorry.
Yeah.
Is that the end of my comment?
Sorry.
Council Gossman.
You know, bring it to a conclusion. I'm wondering also, and I have it up here, you took it away from me, Ashley Higgins. And it's the 48th Annual Officer of the Year. They're having a banquet at Douglas County Fairground. Is there... You are all invited if you want, but you need to let the chief know. Or to be... Okay.
Michelle, you have the invitation right there.
Yeah, I'd like to put my email there, but I would like to congratulate her for that.
Did you hear him? Is it too late to add to the list?
Nope.
I've been on Astroly.
Firewater to bring everybody's attention about that event, the Bank of Orange Bank.
First, you both took Ashley from me, but she knows. And I got to swear in when she first started, so that's going to be part of... Congratulations to Sean, he's a new papa.
Oh.
Grandkids in two weeks.
They did that to my parents.
For a total love.
Yeah.
That's very cool. And I just wanted to say, music ourselves is going well and we're excited. And I'm not going to give away anything right now, but we just signed one paper today on one, so we have, is that one? One more spot that we're waiting to hear on. And then our, our, the headliner. I thought that Diamond Rio was a little bit deepish, deeper-ish. Well, this, this one is even worse. Between the bands.
It's a competition.
And all the stuff that they want, it's like, oh my gosh. But right down to telling us there's only three bottled waters that they will allow. You've got to be kidding me.
They gave you a choice.
And one of them is not costable and that's usually where we get it. Anyway, it's going good and I can't wait till we can...
Well, you don't need black sheets and, I mean, black towels and black dragons with this skirt.
Oh, let me tell you. They wanted nine black hand towels and nine bath towels. Bath towels. Nine, nine total.
Okay.
But we did the bath towels last year, or bath, hand towels. But I've never, this is the first time we've been to Asper.
Never mind then.
Bath towels. I don't know where they plan on using them. But they're coming in their bus, maybe they're, I don't know. And they want us to stock their bus up. So we've said, so anyway, we're doing it in the box. Anyway, I'm excited.
They'll say no to us if we just get some money for it?
Everything, I stayed up there, they're on in the room and nobody's saying.
And everybody has said everything to me, so I'm good to go. And we'll just move on to public comment. So purpose of public comment is to allow citizens to present information regarding items off the agenda. And I'm going to three minutes for citizens to apply. We have one, Karen Meyer, for zone.
Karen Meyer, it's important to ask one. And I'm glad you liked Dana because it's a really big guy. And I don't think he'll get any unicorn and rainbow stories from her. He's just really dangerous, right? He probably doesn't even know what a unicorn is. One thing though, that he and Jerry were not happy about being our enemies and that's a little bit absurd, so. I'm a little concerned about that. A few months ago, I came to and talked to you about the Houthing Grant and Sixth Street. And I'm wondering why in a residential one you have a work barracks? And I hope that somebody up here, when my two minutes and eight seconds is done, can tell, give me the answer to that. If it happened in that neighborhood, it can happen in your neighborhoods, that somebody would rent their house out and have a work barracks there. You have 12, 20 men living next door to you, coming and going to work every day. It's just not right. People buy their properties thinking they're going to be in a single-family dwelling and they're not. And it's just not right. And the other thing is, I asked one of the police officers, because I saw him up there one day, if he... If these guys were illegal, and he said, we don't ask that. They're rotated out every three months. What happens to them after three months? Are they drug addicts? Are they just guys who want to work? Do we know? Does anybody know? Are we having the same transparency problem that, that we just have? I don't even know what you guys are doing here. I mean, we're hearing about all these illegals coming across the border. We're hearing about slave trades and cartels. Do we have cartels up there? Do we have slave trading going on up there? The FBI has said we have terrorists coming in. This isn't a joke. This is serious business for this country. And we don't want it in Southern. I don't want it in Southern. I don't think any of you want it in Southern. And so I'd like to get some kind of an answer that when I sit down, I'd like somebody to answer why it is that we have these work barracks in an R1 zone.
Karen, I don't necessarily have any answer for this, but I do want to comment on, on that because I do live in that neighborhood and I walk with my husband and I walk by myself. I walk, I'm in that area all the time. And the individuals that are in that, that place, they stick to themselves. They do not say hi to you. They don't talk to you. They don't have any interaction with anyone. They walk up and down that street. They walk over to the local store. They walk back. They get in the company. They go do their work and they leave. They have, I have not had any negative interaction with them at all. I don't know what they're doing, but in terms of feeling unsafe around them, I have not had that. But I don't, I just adding that to say that that's just been my experience with, with that.
And I understand that. And I've heard that from neighbors, from other neighbors. But the thing is, they said that they, they had these people coming in and working, being really diligent in Israel.
Yeah, those are probably separate topics. I just, I just wanted to add my comments to that. Okay, Christine, can you talk about zoning if that is an issue with people working in a triangle? So I haven't heard the term as a work barracks. We don't, you know, a single-family dwelling does not tell us how many family members. We don't regulate the number of them. So the work barracks is a new terminology that I don't know. It's more, I would define that more as abuse, not a... How many people are living in a home. So I'm not sure what the complaint is. We have the written complaint that, I guess, outlines the question.
But some of the neighbors are like, I'm afraid of trade.
I'm happy to look into the definitions and see what I can learn, what I can honestly talk about. I would have to do some research.
Did you say that the police have been there? We, we...
They need to come up to my microphone.
Do you want to come up to the microphone?
Yeah.
You have something else to say, because...
The recorder can't pick you up.
We went there one day, just going down Sixth Street and Mike turned to the front of a school bus. And because the school bus driver waved him on and a police officer pulled us over and he had been sitting in front of that house. And so just in the course of our conversation, they didn't arrest us and did tell us that they... They didn't question these people. They didn't question their legality. They don't question them. As I know the police have been over there, but not, I don't think because of anything that they have done. I think they were over there on a complaint from, because something had happened to them, something.
That answers my...
Yeah.
So Police Chief, do you have any comments about this at all?
No.
Okay. Then let's put it to bed and end the meeting so we can...
Ms. Mayor, I didn't sign up, but I have a few words. You guys kind of went off script and came back to the roundabout situation. My name's Steve Seven, 591 Wildcat Canyon. Thank you for trying to recap this thing. Pardon if I am, I'm still confused. I thought we had a motion that Terry voted and we were going to do something. I had no idea what a, that a town was. Or things, or I was trying to speak. But I thought we had a direct... I think I heard we still have a direction, but I'm still not sure we have a direction.
But in the street.
So that's the end of the story. We're not going to have a meeting. Traffic's are with another bunch of consultants.
They wanted to reset their findings.
Right.
The rule we've recommended is street line at this point. And a traffic line, excuse me, a traffic line at this point. And also research for future efforts going forward.
Okay, wonderful. I just, you know, we had a kind of a rude audience here tonight. I couldn't hear a lot of what was being said. I like where we're going there. I do think the Dakota Street interchange has been affected by another issue. By the other street that we're worried about.
Right.
And we should, we need to compartmentalize them. That's right. Okay. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
I would like to say, Karen, and then I'll get off of this. Karen, if you have some option as a concerned citizen, why don't you bring it to us in a written form of an option that you would think would be acceptable?
Acceptable what?
To what you're saying with this work camp.
I'm wondering why they, why you have a work barracks in a single-family dwelling? I don't have an option for you. I'm wondering why you want to...
We don't have an option, then we can't...
I mean, if we, if we don't want some...
I hear concerns and I don't hear an option or a resolution.
Well, here's the thing. If you have people living in a house that you can't, you're legally not allowed to go up there and ask somebody, are you guys a family? Are you guys just workers? Are you legal? What are you doing here when they're not breaking the law? That's illegal to do that. You can't just go up to somebody and do that. It's like someone walking up to your house and saying, what are you doing? Just out of the blue, police can't do that. And so you have no reason, no probable cause or no evidence to say that they're doing anything illegal. I'm not saying anything illegal. So why are, if they're not causing any issues, why are you so concerned about it?
Because I don't want 10 to 20 guys living next to me going out to work and from here anymore.
They're going to work and they're earning a living and they're, they're providing, they're taking care of themselves.
Yeah, they're breaking zoning laws and if we don't want to have zoning laws...
We don't know if they're breaking zoning laws. It could be families all living there legally. You don't know that?
There's no number given to how many can live there.
So we don't know that.
How many, how many families can live there? You said how many people. How many people? We don't... Yeah, but it's the same with family. It means family. It's kind of like...
I know they're not related.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, council will take a five-minute break before meeting and executive session held under ORS 192.660-2. Real property transaction to deliberate the person designated by the governing body to negotiate real property transactions. Representatives of the municipal and designated staff are allowed to attend. Executive session, all other members of the audience are asked to leave the room. We need to...